Just remind me at like forty-five minutes. Don't turn the camera on and off. It doesn't stop. Problem is I put it. Timer, I just click the camera on and off real quick. And. It keeps on going. Yeah, it just makes the persons in there much more visible. Justin, you want to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance? Yeah, thanks Rebecca. Okay, we'll call this meeting to order. Recognize that we have a quorum. If you all rise, just Councilman Justin will visceral lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance and Clerk Rebecca will say the prayer.
I pledge allegiance to the flag. And to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
Our dear Lord Father, we're so grateful for this beautiful day that has given us, we're grateful for the opportunity we have to meet together so that we can discuss the needs of of the town of Thane, and we ask that thy spirit be with us to help us in all the decisions that are made. That we can make, or the council can make the right decisions for the best of the residents, and we're grateful for thee, we're grateful for where we live, and we say a same-same name, thy son Jesus Christ, amen.
Amen.
Any discussion on the proposed agenda? Can we, I assume, Bob, you want to be on the agenda? You want to be on the agenda? You're just, you want, okay, I can put you on there if you want. Because we missed you last month, I knew you were busy somewhere else. Okay. Okay, hearing none, is there, can I get a motion, I guess it's, let's, it's all right, we're, we're going to open our public hearing for El Rodeo Authentic Mexican Restaurant LLC Liquor License. So anybody who would like to speak to that? Hearing none, we will close public hearing on that. Now I'm going to ask for a motion to approve the August twenty-twenty twenty-twenty-five council meeting minutes and adoption of the September seventeenth twenty-twenty-five agenda as finalized.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes and the agenda.
I second that.
More than a second, any other discussion on that? All in favor? Aye. Opposed motion carries. We'll go right into public comment first. Then we'll go now into the restaurant liquor license. So Justin, for your information, when we submit this to the state, if they don't say anything back to us, that means it's good. The most bizarre thing I've ever been a part of, but.
So the state did come back with some corrections that they need to make, and Anna's been right on it, and she's made the corrections, it's just with the name. Not everything was matching with the name it needed LLC on it. So we have, there were a couple more that we've sent, it's just basically some boxes that needed to be checked. Um, so we have sent those to the state, and we haven't heard back from this, from the state about it. So as far as if it gets accepted, then if you could put that maybe in the motion.
Yeah, it's. State of Wyoming is very interesting, the sheer fact of all liquor gets bought through the state. State controls it all. It's still very strange to me, but, so is there any questions regarding this liquor license? If not, can I get a motion to approve El Rodeo? Rodeo, I'm terrible. Rodeo Authentic Mexican Restaurant LLC's Restaurant Liquor License, pending state approval.
I'll make that motion. I'll second that motion.
Any further discussion on that? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed motion carries. Thank you, guys. Appreciate it.
No problem.
We're excited.
So nervous about this meeting. Um, but yeah, everybody, please feel welcome to visit us. Um, everyone can change your time.
Awesome, thank you, guys. Um. You're free to go if you want, you don't, unless you want to sit through this enjoyable meeting. You're more than welcome to, but don't feel like, if you feel like you can step out, you're not offending us, please, go right ahead. Um. Okay.
Thank you, guys.
Mike, we'll turn it over to you.
Good evening, everyone. Mayor Simpson, Becca, Councilman. Nice to be here with you. Want to start off by telling you a little bit of a story. I was born and raised in Heber City, Utah, I don't know if you know where that is. Beautiful little town, east of Tempanogus. Um, right next to Deer Creek Reservoir, and our moniker, for all the years I can remember living there, was the paradise of the Rockies. And I don't think there's a possibility that you could have a better place to grow up than there in the paradise. It was everything I could have asked for and more. We have had residence here in Star Valley for the last several years, um, most of which was up in Stewart's RV facility, and we decided to make it a little more permanent, and so we, um, we looked around up and down the, the total length of Star Valley, looking for the right place to build. And, um, we were introduced to, um, a piece of property just right up the street on Dana. On a street called Franklin Avenue, and we drove down the lane, apparently the subdivision had been available for sale uh, for ten or twelve years, and no lots had been sold, and, um, so we were interested in, in deciding whether that was the place for us. And, um, I believe it was a lovely evening like this. We, uh, my wife and I walked out into the long grass and stood there and watched the sun start to creep down, and, um, two young boys and two dogs came up from the west side of the property down there, probably from Jim, uh, Stoker's place. Anyway, they came up through the field and they hopped over this fence that was on the backside of the proposed lot that we were looking at. And there were two old horses standing there, and they jumped on those two horses and rode down through the field. And, um, I said to my wife, this is the place, right here. I'm home. Because that's just how things were in Heber when I was a kid. And, um, so for the last approximately four years, I have been outside building a house. Pretty much with a few exceptions, I've built it myself. And, uh, so I have been outside from morn until dark most days now, uh, through summer and early spring, late fall, that's where I've been. And one of the disappointing things that I have, the only disappointing thing that I have incurred since I've been here is that the ten-wheelers and the eighteen-wheelers coming down Dana Street, starting at about Muddy String Road love to kick in the compression brakes. And, um, that's sad, in my opinion, because this community is such a peaceful, quiet place, and I would think there are a lot of we would sooner hear, maybe a goose fly overhead. Or, um, chuckers making their noises, or whatever it may be, rather than listening to semi-trucks use those brakes coming down Dana. So, I did a little research and discovered that the city of Thane does not have a, uh, ordinance for the restriction of compression brakes. Another sidelight I'd like to go, before I get to the bottom line of making my request, is that this summer, we've had the experience of riding our motorcycle up through Idaho Salmon, up around, up to Kalispell, over and down Losi Pass, and around through Stanley, we've been to Canada and come down through Montana, and, uh, Butte and Helena, all through all of those small towns. And one of the things with almost no exception is, most of those small towns do have ordinances restricting compression brakes. And why do they have those? I'm sure it's not a matter of being mean to truckers who love to hear that sound. It's a matter of keeping places like Ketchum and Star, uh, Sun, Star Valley, or excuse me, Sun Valley and Stanley and other places quiet and peaceful. So my request for you this evening is I would like to, um, propose that you take an under advisement to create an ordinance that would restrict compression brakes within the city limits of Thane. And, um, as a further side note, I'm more than willing to be helpful in any way that I can in putting the signs up, et cetera, and do whatever I can to try and make, um, Thane just a little bit better. I know it's tough to make it any better, but make it just a little bit better by not having that, uh, that noise. So. Any questions for me?
Any questions, council? I, I can go on record as saying it is going to not happen, because it is virtually impossible to enforce. Because the problem is, and, and our police chief has done an extensive research on this, and the problem is, you have to have, and if I put words in your mouth, you tell me, okay, you have to have an, uh, whatever to read off.
Decibel reader.
Decibel reader. And it has to be calibrated, and basically if he is not writing multiple tickets constantly, they'll get thrown out of court in a heartbeat. And so his basically is basically his, his opinion is, it's, it's almost impossible to enforce in this town because of those various reasons. First off, those, that device is very expensive.
I've looked into it, and what I've discovered is that, uh, they really don't base it on the decibels achieved, it's merely the use of. So it's not a matter of whether they max out a decibel reading or not, based on the, the reading that I've done. It's a matter of, are you using a compression brake to slow the vehicle down, rather than the mechanical brakes to slow it down?
It'd be hard, I think, like looking at like just the town, the boundary of the town, the city limits, you know? Time there, there's going to be slowed down, and probably off the Jake brake before they get into the town, you know? It's a hard.
And even then.
Pressing to even try to pursue that.
So even then, without a decibel reader to prove that there's a sound being made, it's a he said, he said comment, or he said, she said comment. Can truck, the truck driver's going to say, no, I didn't use it, the policeman's going to say, yes, you did. But if you don't have proof, evidence of it, a judge is going to toss it right out. And so I, I get where you're coming from. I'll go on record as saying, I like the sound, so I'm not, I like the sound, so you're not bothering me by the sound, but just based on the sheer fact of the enforceability of it, it, it'd be damn near impossible for a small town like us for it to be able to enforce that on any sort of level of.
The other thing that I have read as well is that just the sign alone basically takes care of it, that most truckers are considered enough that when they see the sign that it is against the law, they'll immediately comply. And that very few tickets are ever even written on them, because it.
That is a possibility to put up signs, as we have signs on both ends of the town on highway, it still doesn't stop them. I, I can, I still hear them, so we can definitely put up the sign up on Dana Street, but.
You say you do have signs out here?
On the north end and south end of town. They're still there, they're just not very readable.
No, they're gone.
Are they gone now? I thought that we put up one that says compression, okay. So we did have them at one time, but it didn't, didn't limit anybody's use of it. Right.
You're right, they still use them.
It didn't stop them. It, it does stop some, I will agree with that statement, I think you are stopping some, but you're not going to limit all of them. So, we can explore the option of putting up signs, but just, it's going to be a courtesy of asking them, but as the enforceability of it, the town's not willing to go down that road, that just because of the problems of, that are forcibility and force, 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 it's impossible.
Yeah. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, we will definitely take that under advisement, thank you. Okay, on to number four, which is the building permit. I don't know if everybody had a chance to look at this, this is for Butch and Jill Roberts, it's addition on the north end of their house, and having talked directly to Butch, this is basically going to create more of a handicap accessible wing for them. Which is needed, so as far as adhering to our ordinances, it's, it's a hundred percent meets our ordinance and standards that are there, so. Is there any questions on this building permit? If not, can I get a motion to issue building permit twenty-twenty-five dash zero nine one six to Butch and Jill Roberts?
Make the motion to approve building permit twenty-twenty-five zero nine one six for Butch Roberts.
I'll second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed motion carries. Oh, you're good. I don't see Butch here, so I guess we'll move on to Cade.
You were the only late one.
What's that?
You were the only late one.
Thank you, Mayor Simpson, on the council. Three projects to update you on this month, the East Booster Generator. We've received all the smittles from Bill at WS Construction and reviewed those. He indicated he'd like to start this month on the generator. And conduit work while the weather's nice, and then he'll be waiting on the generator. He was going to get up so better lead time for that generator, he said the average time he was told was twenty weeks, but he started the order process a couple of weeks ago, about a month ago, so, but he's hoping it'll be quicker than that. And then just getting all the prep work done, he said he's planning on being here next week for the generator pad and all that.
Do we have everything signed? Do we have everything signed and good to go then? I guess, okay.
Um, the North Sewer Land Project, um, we're just continuing working with landowners on the easements. I believe we got a majority of them figuring, figured out, um, just kind of working on the last couple, finalizing those agreements, and then hopefully getting some preliminary agreements in place for so, just so landowners know where stuff's going to be going and then.
Did Kevin get that drafted for you? I haven't followed up with Kevin, you sent that email.
I have not seen that.
Okay.
Memorandum standing for the Roberts property yet.
Okay, maybe I need to stop lying.
Okay.
Pull human inside a little bit.
That would be great.
Okay.
Then the wastewater facility plan, um, last I checked, the meter was last week, we are kind of watching it come down, back down to kind of what we're calling winter levels, you know? So, probably going to be pulling that meter this month and taking a look at the data with the summer surge and seeing what all we found there. Kind of been looking at that all summer, but it'd be nice to see how it kind of tails off and what we end up seeing now that weather's getting cold, so. Hopefully have something for you there. Hopefully be mostly wrapped up with that once we get the fall data in.
So, to catch Justin up, this is, um, they're doing a study for us to fit, to figure out, do we need to, if we need to expand our sewer lagoons or not, so that's, they got the meter down there. We only have one entrance point into our plant, as of right now, um, which the North Sewer Line was going to change that one, so there, so this is okay, this is Justin, Justin's going to be, is going to take the responsibility of being over top of the sewer, so.
Oh.
I know Robert reached out to me today, and so he has his phone number, so, um, he'll be your, working with you guys at that, and I'll still be around as needed too, so don't think I'm disappearing on you, so. Is there any questions for Cade?
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Cade, appreciate it. You have Judge Lawton's report in front of you. Mohammed's been gone, so we don't have as much to report on. Just teasing your, you're good, we're excited for him, his, and his new, um, job opportunity and the freedom that that's going to bring to him, a few more hours of the day freed up, maybe even days of the week freed up, from not having to make that drive up there. Um, so the one quote, one, uh, request that Judge Lawton has asked is, he wants to go to a training, which he's already, technically, he's on the way to it, or he's at it. Um, in Laramie, it says the Wyoming State Bar and Convention for Judges and Attorneys. We don't have to make that motion, but we've taken that policy, we've taken the kind of the liberty of making sure we do that for various reasons. Um, so could I get a motion to approve paying the expenses for Judge Lawton to travel to the Wyoming State Bar's convention in Laramie, Wyoming?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
Second, um, any comment or questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed motion carries. Perfect timing, Joe.
Oh, I don't know about that.
You're up.
Okay. Um. Let's see, start with Parks and Recs. Um. We've had quite a bit going on in the Parks and Recs with the, um, if you haven't noticed, we got two new scoreboards put up in the baseball diamonds. Got power to one, I got an excavator rented on Monday, and so I'll get the other trench dug in on Monday and get that one wired up. But that's exciting for our baseball, we got two new scoreboards over there. And then if you go in the gym, we've got four new basketball hoops down each side of the.
And two new rims, right Cliff? Are those up yet?
Yep.
The rims aren't up yet?
I don't even know where the rims are.
Oh.
Yeah.
Should be two new rims, I thought, I thought I seen them when they first got here. I thought I did.
Right, we put two new rims up or whatever.
Maybe they walked off.
But, the nice thing, these are the basketball hoops for the side ones, and they're adjustable, and so they'll be able to go down lower for the little kids and then back up to.
Did you get to put tape on a cliff to see what the low and high was?
Lowest is No, seven, six.
And then highest, it's all, it's like eleven, nine or something.
Oh, that high.
Or was it, no, it was nine, nine, so it's almost right there.
Yeah.
Well, I'm, I'm just excited to be able to lower them down for the little kids, because we were right at nine feet before, if I remember, if my kicking off the wall and grabbing it as a kid reminded me of that, um, so, yeah, thanks, Joe.
Yep. And they look nice, um. I appreciate Rebecca's input, because I was at a thing there on Saturday, and it was funny, because you didn't even notice them. Originally, we planned on going with the solid black ones, and they would have stood out. Definitely seen the basketball hoops in every event, so, the event we had Saturday, you didn't even particularly notice them or whatever, so. It was nice going with the clear ones. I appreciate Rebecca's input on that, I appreciate Cliff, he looked into quite a bit. There's a lot more, lot more to mounting basketball hoops than you think, and then finding cinder blocks that were solid and not hollow core ones, right anchors and everything, so appreciate it.
Can I cut, can I cut in real fast? So we're on those two things you just talked about, there's a letter of appreciation that I'd like to counsel the sign that we're going to send back to those two entities that.
So, the scoreboard for Silver Star and Flat Creek Electric bought those, and the scoreboard is the county grant that we applied for, so. We want to say thank you, and if possible, have them come down and look at them or something like that again, so we appreciate all they do for us, we do quite a bit. Um. With that, we also have volleyball, flag football, and tackle football. So they all seem to be cruising right along on Thursday nights. Keeps the field really busy on Thursday night, the gym and everything, parking lots full. And then, um, we have signups for adult ladies volleyball going on right now. That will be coming up closing. Soccer goals. The big goal, um, are coming apart. If you've noticed or moved them or anything like that. So we're looking at buying some new soccer goals. And the nice thing about these is they actually have wheels on it as well, so we're not worried about pushing them and having them falling apart on somebody or.
So, and Ryan, let me inject them, trying to have a side conversation, so I, what size are these, and I'm going to turn it over to, unless you know, I'm going to turn it to Rebecca to tell us what size field. Because we have, we have, we have the biggest field, right, and then we have two on the.
So I just looked up, um, for that age, and then what, what size we do for the field, and then it told me right off.
So this is not the biggest field.
And it's not this nine-ten, and it's the upper, where we have those black, they're just falling apart.
So this is on the East Baseball, West, East Baseball Field.
East.
So our biggest field has the nice goals that we got, I mean, clear back when I was here, and they've done fine. They're missing some pieces, and then the nine-ten, I think those were the same time too, which is over ten years.
So is that, the nine-ten is not the same size as this?
Might be.
Because my, my only thought I have is, is we have a, a large group of Hispanic gentlemen, and there were women too, there was women there last Thursday playing, and it would be nice to, because, and they moved them, they move them around, and when we're playing football and that, we kind of kick them it gets, we move them all there, so I was thinking of like, if this is the right size, it would be nice to have that there so that they have easier accessibility movement, that was my thought, so that's where my thought was coming from.
Would use these just fine, I don't know that they really, I think they use the smaller ones.
They use the small, that, that second down. That, that's the same size, because they just play that shorter way, but, but sometimes they'll play the length, the full length of the football field when we.
My other thought was when I saw this, is to look at our big ones and see about putting wheels on. By the way, we got it, we'd look and see how the wheels are mounted, and then say, why not put some small wheels on those?
What, Cliff question?
Or if they hold up, then we have to mark them. Right, I mean, like I said, but it's a smart idea to have wheels on. But, um, cost wise, we're looking at about five thousand.
One.
Or two. That's for repair.
Here we get some probably two.
No, so five thousand for. Is it different? One for five thousand and one for, oh, sorry, you got one and Joe got one.
Oh, your second pages, your two pages are the same, and my two pages are the same, apparently you're supposed to have one of one. What's the difference? Can you rip your page off and pass it down here, and I'll pass mine down to you? They're the same. Fair enough. Are you proposing the higher one or the lower one? You, do you remember which one you're proposing? Um, yeah, Will's was five hundred bucks.
Proposing the higher.
So should I go get it?
Is this the higher one? Oh, this isn't, yeah, well, you run get it. Sorry, we will kick on here, you guys can take a look at this. You can pass that down.
And what is like the rec budget, like how much does it set aside, like rec to buy new supplies and?
I knew you were going to ask that question.
I was looking to see exactly what I have to let them do.
If you kind of look on these pictures, it almost looks like they have a, like a U joint, and then it's got where the wheel goes in and that. I guess that's kind of what I can kind of sort of make out. All you'd have to do is weld.
Right.
Almost better than having to just to bolt through. I'm not sure.
Yeah, we just have to see what they, not physically, but there. The only reason I say modify is to share a few thoughts. Thane is back in the day, we had to modify those parts, we kept in and out, it's given so much, they started bending the frames up.
Yep. The parker we budgeted ten thousand seven hundred and fifty, and we have seven thousand nine hundred and twenty-two left. After all the people who came in and said whatever, so.
What was the remainder left, Joe? Seven thousand what?
Seven thousand nine twenty-two. Soccer is our biggest sport. We average a little over three hundred and, I'm sure we had three hundred and seventeen kids playing soccer.
Three hundred and seventeen?
Three hundred and seventeen, yeah. Crazy. So we, we use every, every ounce of space we have.
That's more kids than were in my entire school system in Maine.
We average more kids than we have in the town of Thane. But it's worked, it's worked great. It's been, having it on one, one of the biggest successes we've had on that is having it on one night. Everybody seems to like having it. Wednesday night is soccer, they don't have to do it. So they have to wait. Yeah. We're doing, finding the same thing with flag and tackle and volleyball at the same time.
Sorry, apologize for this. Both quotes were the exact same, by the way, so apparently they're there. Um, Justin's question. And soccer. Yeah.
So I guess like that, that tells us how much we can spend, right?
In theory.
You're talking to the wrong person, because in theory, yes, but the so I, I ain't gonna wreck it. I don't care. People know, my, my policy on budget is, my policy on budget is the big items, the big numbers at the end of the budget. Um, not so much necessarily in there because stuff happens. Um, we're a small town. I don't typically have a department that has a, through it all, so. Even in this hundred and fourteen here, I still look at this number down here. And where we're at, spending and income there. And so, um, we try to be very prudent and very judicial with our money, but at the same breath. I'm a big proponent of, if it improves the town, if it improves quality of life, and we have the money for it, I'm all for it versus even if it goes over a little bit of the budget. But yes, Joseph has seven thousand dollars basically in the budget there. You can have this budget.
The, and, and part of the reason, a couple of reasons why I think we need them is, A, that's Rebecca said, our stuff is ten, ten, twelve years old at least. And the other part is, we do have quite a following of people playing soccer every single night, and the goals are getting moved. So having ones with wheels and stuff would be a huge thing for
So do you want to make, make the motion?
I make a motion, we
You got?
Is this the next year or this year?
We'd get them this year. Well, probably in the spring, we'd get them.
Did you happen to approach the recreation board for them?
We haven't for this. We put in our applications for stuff in March, and then it's approved and you get it in the fall. And that's what, that's what this was this year.
We're kind, we're kind of backlogged with them. They actually, they, we ask for so much and they're very generous and very kind to us. But they typically tend to pay us half upfront and half on us, so we hit both their budgets already. So technically, we've already got this year's budgets. But they continue to be generous and allow us to the next time, so.
No, I
No, yeah.
I might be looking for this for the other goals.
So to clear this up, we're gonna buy like, the one set for five thousand, we're looking to buy two sets for the ten thousand eighty-four dollars.
One set.
One set for now.
Yeah. Because then that keeps me under budget.
I thought they were just two different boats.
They literally came as two PDF files, so curious what happened. Yeah.
And it looks like we're going with the eight and a half by eighteen, right? That's for the age group and stuff is what I, okay. By making motion that we go with these, the Sager soccer goals, eight and a half by eighteen for five thousand forty-two dollars and twenty cents.
I'll second that.
Second, and now for any further discussion on this? Okay, all in favor?
Thank you.
So I guess, what have we, Joe? Can you give us just a brief update, what we have asked for over the last three or four years with our rec, with the county rec grant?
Um, yeah. Um, the scoreboard on the football field was county rec. The gym floor was county rec. What else was there? There were two. What's that, the play area?
Oh, yeah.
In the, in the gym or in the room?
Yeah, Rebecca's, Rebecca's playroom.
The, these new scoreboards in there, except our gym and stuff have been and the big scoreboard, we had a, the original scoreboard in the gym um, was
Cornhole, cornhole boards.
The cornhole boards. They, they've just And I'll give credit to Rebecca and Sally too. They, they are one of the few, when I've talked to the county rec, we're one of the few that actually sends stuff back to them or have them come down and see what's actually got done. Which I think goes in long ways. This, this thank you card and stuff like that, showing pictures and talking to them will go a long ways. We might even have the little kids, send them a thank you card for delivering the basketball hoops. That would help a lot too. But I'm also always up, if you guys see a need. Like I said, we could probably replace more soccer goals, so we're keeping up on what we're doing. Yeah, as far as that, as far as rec goes, we're, we're cruising along. Um, we'll probably if I get a chance, I'll put more s- the, the baseball there out on the field and try to get them in the right shape before winter. And then let them sit over winter and then, or that's been a huge improvement on those. Roads, um, the roads look extremely nice where they did that seal coating. Everybody I've talked to is really happy with what we're doing there. That seems to hold up extremely well. Cliff's been getting things ready for snow, but that's not too far away. So unfortunately. But he's getting everything ready and I appreciate him being ahead of that, not waiting until it snows and then thinking, oh, we have this to get fixed. So I appreciate that, Cliff.
Travel and tourism. Do you have anything to report? If not, we'll move on.
I thought that was down there, Bob, below me. Well, did Bob talk about the challenge points?
Nope.
I'm gonna have him talk about them.
We'll turn the time over to Bob there.
The traveling tourism, basically, we talked about challenger coins last time. So since Bob's here and knows more about it, I'm gonna ask him, he'll kind of give a spiel on it a little bit before I
The, um, as you know, the county put in their, their request for um eight thousand nine hundred dollars for the challenge coins and for the, the actual um, event that we're doing, which is the scavenger hunt. And we'll use those coins as a prize for those that complete the scavenger hunt. We have designed the county's coin currently, and there's two ways we can do this. Uh, when, before they strike the coins, it's about a two hundred and fifty dollar setup fee for the coin itself. And then we can do it two different ways. You can have your own coin, or you could be on the back of our coin and put your logo or, and name of the community on the back of the coin. It's, it's a money saving type thing. The county's gonna, going to strike about two thousand coins right now. We know that that's not gonna be enough. So, and we've got funds to take care of many more if we need to. Uh, we also know that if there's an opportunity for something we can help you with, and that, we'd be glad to do it. Uh, we have a meeting coming up next week with the semi-quintcentennial committee for the county. And in that, in that, we're gonna be talking about the mapping and the preparation of those maps. And uh, we're gonna hold a celebration, most likely, at the fairgrounds. Uh, when we, when we get into, actually do the thing. My time's up. Okay.
This is the picture of the county coin opposite.
Yeah.
That's the front, and there's the back.
And every bit of that was done by ChatGPT. I am not an artist. All I did was put in the parameters of, of the county, those things that we're known for. And uh, after several iterations, it finally came back correct. But, and we're working with a company out of Utah. Artistic Creations LLC. I can send you, I think, Joe, did I send you that information today? Okay. And um, we can certainly, you know, if we go together, we can get our numbers up and we can get them done cheaper. That's what I'm kind of driving for. Their turnaround time, we have plenty of time, because we're looking at a celebration next year on the fourth, and we're gonna start the scavenger hunt in May. That's the plan right now. Uh, celebration, we'll have one up here and we'll have one in Kimmer. We just felt like if we combined the county and we did both ends, it's just too far to drive for people to actually complete the scavenger hunt. So we'll have a celebration there as well as a map for the, for uh, South Lincoln and one for North Lincoln. We'll have people that will be at some of the sites to explain what's going on. The key is to, for the people that are doing the scavenger hunt, to take a picture at the site with themselves in the picture and uh, submit that, and that way we know that they actually got there and took the picture and and then we'll judge the whole thing. And I don't know how many people will actually complete the whole thing, but we don't have enough coins to handle it.
How many stops, locations are you thinking?
Uh, at least thirty. We don't think you'll finish it in a day. I'll put it that way. And we've had people contact us that heard about what we're doing from other states that will come in and want to do this, to take their kids to see different parts in, in the history. We're working with the Historical Society in Star Valley, as well as the one in South Lincoln, to put together those, the areas. Right now, you know, he's the chairman of the Star Valley Historical Society. And he's a wealth of information. So we're excited about getting that off the ground. But we've encouraged each community to do a coin if they can. That way we have nine coins in total for the, the people that will complete the scavenger hunt. And it'll be set in a, a display that's made out of uh walnut. And then you just stand the coins up inside that. Our coin is gonna be a two inches in diameter. It doesn't mean that yours has to. It's strictly up to what you guys wanna do. Any questions for me?
Well, the travel and tourism board seemed pretty excited about it too.
Oh, you kicked me off again. Sorry. You're messing with me over here. I see this and I'm like, what's going on with our Zoom link? Like, what's happening? Okay, thanks.
Thank you. That's where we're at. Um, I think I showed you guys the picture of the coin I was working on. I haven't got it back to it yet. So I'm doing the same thing with ChatGPT. So I'll try to have a couple options and I've got some other people working on it too. Other thing that we have going on with the travel and tourism, I was gonna show you, is this. So they're trying to bring skidoring to Thane. They picked the dates of February twenty-eighth and twenty-ninth. Um, it kind of works out that they have them in Pinedale, Driggs, and here. It's the guy that's doing it or whatever. Katie's helping put that together. Travel and tourism wants to, to bring that here.
What was the date one more time, Joe? Sorry.
February twenty-eighth and twenty-ninth.
So they're thinking a two-day thing?
Um, they average about a hundred participants. And right now they have over fifty committed.
Wow. A lot of people, that's a lot of horse trailers.
It's a lot of Um, they leave a lot of spaces open for locals, I guess. Because they try to drum local competitors. Um, I'm kind of letting Katie run with this. She had a guy, um, they were gonna send us the rules or whatever. She said we need to have, like and I said, well, please get those from him so we're not having to reinvent the wheel. So she's getting the whole, the whole event schedule, what they do in Pinedale and Driggs and, and the guy that does that or whatever, so. We're hoping that can pull together. Because I've heard rumors that Afton tried to take it from here when we were starting it, but I don't think it's gonna happen now. I think it's definitely gonna be here.
So I just wonder where we're gonna put a hundred and fifty horse trailers. That's a lot of them. And still have the room for pedestrian parking and still have room for a course.
We decided where we were gonna run the course.
Gonna run it down the sewer ground.
Gotta be at the sewer ground, but I'm just trying to think, where do you even park that many horse trailers? Okay, it's a good problem to have.
That's something I will start working on. Drop your horse off, come park at the community center.
Yeah, we, we can figure that.
Drop your horse off, park, see, park at the rodeo grounds.
Yeah, might have to do some of that stuff and just use some shuttling. Cool.
Might have to plow up near you to park or whatever, so anyhow. That's, and she's given me the specs and what we have to, like, set up. And I've contacted Lower Valley um about using the snowcat we have here to help build some berms or something like that. Anyhow, that's what we got going on with the travel and tourism.
Any questions for Joe on any of those three things? Not, we'll go to Lenny.
Okay, uh, we did the ribbon cutting on the mural, which was pretty awesome. Hope you guys all, if you weren't there. I'm sure you saw it all on the paper and on Facebook and every other place.
Sorry.
Did I mess up your Zoom when I?
No.
Okay.
It looks really good.
Does, doesn't it?
So um, sorry, Lenny, I'm cutting you off. So I would like us to be able to, so we had um Katie Roberts take a picture of this. Those are actually her picture. This isn't the digital one, though they're both very close. I would like us to, as we, as winter comes along, make some postcards out of these, out of this. Um, design and have a bunch of postcards printed and just have them for sale for, you know, even if, we don't need to make any money on them, but just have them for sale here for that people can stop in and get them and we can distribute them to local businesses as well to, to just, just something that they can remember Thane by, that they have something there, they can go off, so. We did pay Katie and we'll pay Katie for that, to have that digital rendering.
Looks great. Then we had the pavilion repair done today, so Then we had the pavilion repair done today. So the south end of that was. Rebuilt, primed and ready for paint. You want me to send you a picture of that Devon? So you can put it up?
You can put it up. You have your wifi? You can hijack it just like Joe. Is he on the wi, is he on the wifi?
It's a little different than the other side, but I think the other side was done probably. Thirty years ago.
Sixty years ago?
You get it all done today and primed and I don't know if. It really matters if the other side matches, but I guess the other side is in a lot better shape though.
Oh, that looks cool.
Yeah, you can, unless you're, yeah, you can. So, so we get that done.
Thank you, Lenny, for coordinating that.
Yeah, it's no problem. How do I get off this thing?
Slide down again?
I can hij, I can hijack it back. Save you time.
That's really all I get. I think the community center roof's done now, isn't it entirely? Yeah, so. So unless anyone's got any questions for me, then I think that's all I have.
Turned over to Justin, but he doesn't have anything to report because he just barely got an assignment today. So I'll turn it over to Nicole.
I did not make the fire hall meeting. And then. Did, did we, the water?
It was on a service line. It was on our side right by the meter. But we got down and found out it was electrolysis. Nipple in between the reducer from one inch to three quarter. And sad part of it is it's eleven, three years old and it's already had, had electrolysis to it.
That's not good.
So anyway, but I think we'll get that down that afternoon and get that fixed. So.
And then did you get the, was it the vault? And then I have in front of me a water and sewer connection for Bear Hollow. And it's for a three quarter inch and. Uh, they paid one point two five of a connection fee. Or impact fee, not connection fee.
Right. That's because they're out, not within the town limits. And so there's a hundred and twenty five percent of what, really, what the town residents are. And that's for water and sewer. He did sewer too. Those are pit, usually we take a motion on these because it's tied to a building permit, but. You know, we don't approve no building permit. It's more for informational purposes.
Yeah, he's paid. Do you want this?
I guess, do you want to make a motion to approve this, I guess? I guess Rebecca's telling me we should probably have one.
I'll make that motion.
To approve his water and sewer connecting permit for one hundred Bear Hollow.
I'll second it.
Are you okay with that? Any discussion? All in favor? Post motion carries.
That's really all I had.
Any questions for Nicole? If not, we'll go to me. So I'm not sold a hundred percent. I want to, I'm going to lay back four oh seven. I know you're probably tired of hearing on this. This is a big deal. And so I just want you to sit on it one more time. I think we'll do a final third reading next month. But take your time, chance to review it one more time. I promise I'm going to review it one more time to see if there's anything that catches my eye on that one. Ordinance four oh eight, and I know this is, always looks bad when. Mayors and council members do this, but. I, I want them changed the reimbursement rate for. For the council and for the mayor. Right now, the mayor is seven fifty a month and council members are seventy five for actual meetings. I'm proposing going to a thousand dollars a month for the mayor and a hundred and twenty five dollars per actual attendance at the regular meetings. My rationale for this is. When as all is said and done of this council, I have, all have appointed, I've already appointed two and I'm about to appoint a third one. Nicole gets her transition done. Unfortunately. And it was just hard to find people willing. And I know it's not a lot of money. But any little bit helps maybe encourage somebody to, to come and serve on this because it is a thankless position. It's a lot of heartache. It's a lot of. Name getting thrown around in the mud. So that's what I'm proposing there. Any questions or comments on that? If not, um, can I have someone make a motion to improvements, to approve ordinance four oh eight? Surrounding is?
What's that?
What surrounding towns are?
No. I guess I'm looking at meeting wise. Does that make sense?
Like what is it? Like, no, I don't.
So for the regular council meeting. But it's for any meeting you have, is it for any?
That's up to our interpretation. The, the, the state code book says any regular or special meeting is what the technical. It's coding, it's coding says for that. That's up to our interpretation, I guess, whether you're going to deem that only as council meetings or special council meetings. Or is that outside meetings that you're required to attend to as behalf of that? We've always interpreted as out, any regular meeting outside of council as well. That's how we've interpreted it. We, we can, we can ma, make that change in there. So you're saying you're changing, you're proposing to change it for actual attendance at each regular or special meeting. You're wanting to change that language a little bit. Is that what you're saying to clarify that? Any meeting that carries your responsibility somehow, something like that? Yes.
I, I see it for a council meeting, but if I have to go meet somebody for twenty minutes for. Lenny runs down to meet somebody for twenty minutes on a. On a community center thing.
Yeah, no, I get what you're saying.
I don't want it left up to somebody's interpretation on how they.
Agreed. So can I ask, because I've always asked, can I ask for you to pass this on first reading and I'll, and we'll work on cleaning that up on second reading? Because I'm okay, I'm okay with that. With that. And to go back to what's, what's the going rates around the communities? We are on the low end. I'm just speaking for the valley. I think Al, Alpine. Uh, is the highest and they're close to twenty thousand for their mayor. There is a range. There is a statutory range. Afton, I think is five thousand. I know, I know Star Valley Ranch is. I don't know, even though I think they're close to fifteen to two thousand, the fifteen hundred a month. And so I think Alpine is just below that. As for their council, most of them are right around the hundred dollar mark for council members, if I remember right. And I can have those exact numbers for you next month. Any other questions or comments?
I'll make a motion. We approve it on the first reading.
I'll second it.
Can we add some language to that? If you're, if it's favorable to you, make some motion to approve ordinance number four oh eight town. There you go. That's what we, yep, first reading. Are you okay with that, Lenny?
Yeah.
Okay, any further discussion? All in favor? Post motion carries. So I preface this, I guess, after the fact, this does not take effect for any of us. It takes effect for the next election cycle. And so, um, when we did this last time, there was several council members. Two council members who are below that until the next election. So you can't basically, you can't give ourselves a raise and go through there. Events, so next month, so I'm reminding you, you have your flyer in front of you. I have a feeling we're going to use this a lot more, huh? Great use of this. So we, we talked about this. We had this last year in September. And we're going, we, the council unanimously voted to do this again. This is basically an open house where allows the public. To come in and ask us questions. Grill us, do whatever you want. She has a Q R code. Is that Q R code for the new updated one or not yet? Oh, did you? Are these the new ones I just did? No. So this is the questions. These are just basic. This was just me off the hook saying, okay, because we did a questionnaire last year and it was very helpful. We haven't done some of those things on those lists, but we, we fully intend to buy. The number one thing, or a number one thing I recall was everybody wanted something to cover for shade at the playground. Rebecca's always reluctant to spend money, so I always blame her for this. But it is on the list to buy. The one thing I will say, it's really hard about the town and being in Wyoming, particularly Star Valley with any budget is we start our budget July first. Which usually by July, we're so busy, we don't get anything done. And so we, by the time we come back around to it's next spring and so. And it's hard when we do things like this because it's not on this budget cycle. It has to be on the next budget cycle, which puts us behind. So. That, that was the number one request from the twenty five or so, um, comments we had. So this is the comp, these are things that just I off. Hand. Come up with for questions. You don't want to make too many questions. Probably, I didn't know those thirteen. Maybe too many, maybe just right. But as you look over them, is there any of them? You're like, nope, we need to get rid of that. Or is there? Ones that you're like, yep, we need to add more to that as well. Basically just trying to get people's feedback of what they want so that we kind of have some direction and that as well.
I'd like to put the Wyoming Business Council's question on there.
Oh, yes, that's a good one.
They asked us, what do you want your town known for? But that would be. And then I'd love to see the responsible for that.
Yeah, it's technically the eighth. It's on the eighth. Yeah, I might say fifteenth on stuff, but the real date's the eighth. We caught that because of Nicole. Nicole complained last year. Nicole politely reminded us that we should not do it around the fifteenth, which we are a hundred percent agree with that. So Joe is the, so the question is, so the question I was going to ask is, and I'm just going to leave it blank. So it's just an open ended question that anybody can fill in there. So it's what do you want the town thing to be known for going forward? Is that the correct wording you would like?
I would think so. I mean, we used to be known for the Chiefs factory. That's what everybody knew it was for. I mean, when the Wyoming Business Council asked that, we both were kind of like, I'm not sure.
I agree. So we want to make this go live as soon as possible. So tomorrow this will be out. If you're, if you have, we need to make, you need to go through and tell me what changes you want on this right now. Sorry, we're putting you up in the spot and you have two seconds to look at it, but, um, by the end of the council meeting, as I keep talking, you can read this and. Add any more questions to that, but we want to go live with it just so that we can put it on our website, put it on our social media, reach out and just get what people's opinions are. For that, so. Yes, no, it is council meeting is on the eighth. Make sure everybody remembers this. We're going to start at six o'clock with our open house and our council meeting won't start till seven. So we maybe hope to have an abbreviated council meeting. So we're not here till super late that night. Any other comments you want me to make regarding that?
So are we kind of going to discuss what they envision? Are we doing?
What do you envision? I wasn't here last year. I apologize. Remember I was out of town, so I dumped it on you guys. Because I wasn't there. We know, we know. We're just going to do it here this time. So we aren't going over the community center. Last year you guys kind of had stations for the, oh, so people can talk about your responsibilities at those stations. I kind of want to leave it up and leave it semi-formal. Do you have any expectations of what you guys want, envision and what you guys want there with this?
So last year we kind of put pictures together of everything we've done since you were in the council or Devon was mayor, probably not ago. But, and so we had quite a bit. So I don't know if we go to now just doing what we've done in the last year. So it's kind of more. Simple, I guess, of what we've done in the last year, or do we just add on to what we had last year?
I would say this year.
Yeah.
So if we did this year, you'd have the baseball fields, the basketball hoops, the roads.
Oh, yeah, sorry. Hold on. She's got to write this down. Don't talk too fast.
Your play center.
Wait, was the player in?
No, that was, that was last year.
Mine's not this year?
I'll look on the thing. I can't remember if it was done or not.
No, it wasn't done by October last year.
Did you give us an update last year?
Yeah.
Remember we went, we looked at it all and you're like, what, what we get done so far?
So it wasn't done. So the play center.
Let's just start with the community center.
The mural, the roof. Like the community center roof type thing.
Look at you, Lenny. You got a lot done this year.
Resailing the parking lot.
I mean, the parking lot.
So the roads, we did park, we did the parking lot and heat drive and, oh yeah, sorry. That wasn't best. Whenever that was done. Man, Lenny, you're just going down the road here. Basketball hoops.
The pavilion.
Pavilion, scoreboard. Baseball diamond. We did do a lot. Heat drive, right street.
And that was the reselling? How you say it? Reselling.
The generator that we're getting put in?
It's not done yet.
Okay.
Did we do the booster?
Was it the booster this year?
No, that was done.
With the booster.
Nicole just wants something on her list. That's leaps and bounds.
You have to be standing here in uniform.
Unless there's complaints, then we will protect you.
And I think you ought to have a picture of the activities. You did a huge Easter egg hunt.
Travel and tourism, what did you guys, maybe let you, you could look up what the travel and tourism funded and kind of the amount they funded. It's impossible to have the statistics of what that happens, but we could, you can reach out to Duke and find out what the broadcasting of the. Parade is because I'm going to be a hard no again this next year.
They were huge things.
The best one in this valley, so. What I've been told. Fourth of July parade.
Harry, the Harry Potter?
Yeah, Harry Potter.
Yeah, you'll have to look up what they all spend on tour.
Should we have the budget people come in here? The towns, what did I call it again? Travel and tourism people come in too?
I'll invite them to, you should go.
Give them their own little like.
Yeah, they should. They're part of the, they're part of.
Part of what?
Last year we did also the budget. We put it big so they could see the budget. So we were just like, but maybe also our ordinances that we are looking at.
Our website.
All the websites.
Yeah, no, let's do that. And any ordinances that we passed outside of.
Yeah, put a Q R code to the.
Table for a county commissioner.
No, it's not, right?
Zoom too.
All that there, they can zoom.
Yeah, we can actually function it.
Yeah. You don't have to go to the place or anything to see the meeting.
Anything else?
If you think of anything else.
Yep.
Equipment wise.
Yeah, we have money.
Get the rock rate.
But that rock rake was awesome.
So we got the rock rake for equipment wise.
Okay. Moving on. So, there's been a committee formed for the Christmas, they wanna do something on Christmas. It's the Monday after Thanksgiving, and so I'll have more details to report next month. Actually, I'm gonna keep that. Nativity. The three of you down at the end will remember that we presented, you have the book. Nativity, so we've used, um, the black. Cut out, painted black nativity for the last five years. And it, it has used, it served its purpose, and we've been very much appreciative of this. Rebecca's asked to purchase this two years ago, and I think we said yes, but she wouldn't do it. Cuz it is expensive, it, it, it was, it's ten thousand dollars. And I, and so. I say we need to do it, just because ours is getting worn out and getting there, she does reluctantly, not willing to do the, spend the money again. Does the council have a sway one way or the other? Cuz I've got one vote and she's got one vote again. Yeah, she can, she can speak her piece about this.
What we thought of trying was to do maybe somewhat, like, do the nativity we have. And do it white, and then put lights on it. Maybe drill holes and put lights on the shape, so you can see it a little bit more, I think the whole issue is just being able to really see it. Um, so that catalog like that, because it lights up, you can see it, we hope. But it would be nice maybe to use our nativity, see what we think first too, but then, all, this stuff always goes on sale. In the spring, and then if we decide, you know what, yeah, we still need to do it, because of whatever this year. Then we do it in the spring.
Which translates into she won't buy it again.
Denise had an idea of maybe we just do the nativity scene this year, cuz it will be a lot of work to put lights on them. Um, so then we just do the, the family.
Yeah, first family. So there is concern with buying this, I, I will state that we have a lot of snow. And as much as our snow blower and our plow drivers do their best to turn the chutes and to try to limit that. They still hit them, like, that's my concern of buying something like this. Um, especially now that we put it on the canal, right on the post, which has been actually a huge plus last year doing that, I'll be honest, it was so much easier. And it was so much easier for me to take down. With that. So. Thoughts, questions?
If Denise said we just do the ones, I mean, I'll just be doing the ones, so I'm all for doing a small amount. You know that my recorder's off, so she can't. But. I'd say we try with that, see what the lights are on that, we'll have to spend some money on some lights. To get some, they have to be brighter than the ones that we've tried it with before, like on the star.
Yeah, it's like the star, and I think you drilled holes, it's basically, we would be doing it. Like we have the star done with all the nativity, which is a lot of holes, but.
I, I would recommend that, but then, if it doesn't work, buy stuff in the spring, would be my take on it.
Any other thoughts? Okay, I guess we'll go with that. Oh, I'll tell you, I love technology. Okay, this is for, technically, hold on. I really need to. This isn't intended for the public, it's out there, but if they wanna see it, I guess they can go scroll and read it. So this is a letter directed to me, um, this is internally, you're more welcome to see it, but it's not gonna be widely circulated, so. Um, the hospital, um, we do a grant through the Wyoming Business Council. The town bought the building and sold it to the, seeing to the hospital, this one's straight across the street from us. They. Did not make a payment. On the last year or this year. Unfortunately, I don't know how to rotate it, maybe there is. They didn't miss the payment. And so, because they missed a payment, they are defaulting on their loan.
Well, they missed two payments.
Technically, they've only missed one, well, they missed it and then they paid it. Right here, they missed the January one and then paid it clearly late in Jan, last year, and they haven't made this payment this year.
How they do in October, and they paid it in January, and then they didn't pay the whole year.
So, technically, it was a zero percent interest loan, as long as they made all their payments. The day they missed their payments, the interest went back in. So, by technicality, they would, if, under the old plan, they would owe us a hundred and eighty-six thousand five hundred and fifty dollars. To finish out that loan, was what the principal are. Because they skipped that payment, and they now owe us this amount right here, four hundred and fifty-six thousand nine hundred and sixty dollars and sixteen cents. I have my personal opinion on this, um, I have, the CFO's tried to call me, me and the CFO's been playing phone tag lately with this. Just, this is more just your information, because nothing's come to light there, I'm a hard believer that they need to pay all of it. They made, they missed the, it's their mistake, not ours, we, we were generous to give them a zero percent, so. Um, I'll be curious what their CFO has to say, so, this is just looping you guys into the sheer fact that because of their lack of. Whatever you wanna call it, that they owe us a huge chunk of money. Or we can go foreclose it, which I told Rebecca, I got her swimming pool, if she would let me foreclose on them, I got her swimming pool. Granted, it's pretty small, but she had to have her swimming pool. So, as of right now, we have not enforced any issue with this, um, so I'll still say, I'll let you know as we get closer on what. The decision needs to be made by the council, so. Um, but that's, that, that's our attorney saying, yes, this is a hundred percent accurate, this is also our independent. Accountant, Wade Hershey, also a hundred percent agrees with this statement. And so he's the one that did this amortization schedule, discussed, showing this, and so, they both, both those two independently. Came to the same conclusion. Okay. I've also met with the hospital, I sat down with them for their EMS discussion, and that's a complete debacle that. We as a town have taken the stance on that they are responsible and will work with them and working on helping to create a solution, but ultimately, it falls on them to re, be responsible, so. I had a meeting with them, two and a half hours. Their real answer, which they wouldn't come out and say it, but it really, they wanna make the towns pay a huge chunk of money to them, is basically what their answer was, was to. Create a dollar amount for each individual and go after the county and the towns to pay it. The towns kinda laughed them out of the room, when that brought up saying, you guys already have a three mil levy, and you wanna come tax the towns for this? Um, so, they have, they're looking, they're exploring some options of what they can do. We aren't required by the town to have it, that's why the towns have all taken the stance that we've taken. Until the state requires us, which I have a hard time seeing the state require it, just given the fact that. There's so many small towns, and if you tax the towns that much more, it's gonna be. Hard. Pickleball courts. So as you know, Justin doesn't know, we've been working on trying to figure out how. How to resurface our tennis court. And after a legal. A year-long legal discussion with the church, Jesus Christ Latter Day Saints. We're willing to move forward, all we gotta do is write them a letter saying that we will move forward, so. Um, there's some options here of what we wanna do, Rebecca's been, and Sally's taken kinda the lead of this. There's two options, you can kinda do what we, well, this is two options they've explored, is, one is a sport court, which is kinda like a snap-in thing. That bid came, estimate came back at a hundred and thirty-five thousand. And I don't like that personally, cuz I can just see kids going out and taking them up. The other one was to come in and do like an acrylic surface. And resurfacing it, and they had a couple bids that have, couple estimates that have come in right around the. Just call it fifty thousand mark, um, probably closer to sixty to sixty-five would be our guess by the time that. Cuz we've basically talked about, um. You could change it into, from two tennis courts, you could easily make four, and you could go as, as much as six pickleball courts. Um, or you could maybe do three on one side and keep the tennis on the other with the markings for the pickleball court. What's your thoughts, council? I know this is kinda throwing it at you. We've talked about doing this before, we've talked about going after a grant. Which is the. Oh, yeah. Oh, yeah. Is it the same one? It is. We can go after the, the outdoor, it, it's. They clump it several things in there, but outdoor recreation's one of them that's tied in there with the water conservation, they're both under the same grant, so we can go after that, that's a fifty-fifty grant. That application is due in, pre-application's due in February, hard applications due in May. Um, and they don't award it till October, so we would be into twenty-twenty-seven before we could do this. Or we could look into getting this done next year under our, as a town's own expense. And getting it done next year, this is, we don't have to make a decision today, I'm just giving you information so you guys can think about it, and Rebecca, oh, will gladly scan this and get this out to you. Yeah, yeah, maybe that's, be something that would more go on that line there, so. Just a thought there, we wanted to even, that was one of the other things that we had from our meeting last year, people wanted is, is that. Ground that facility picked up and proved, so. That's your thoughts, think about that. She really did all this in order, so you. So the senior center next door to us. Reached out to Silver Star to get a bid for, to convert to fiber. Fiber optic for the town hall here, um, the bid came back at a ten thousand dollars. Um, working with Weston Barlow, they, he worked with the, his company, and they said that they would be willing to do it for five. And they'll eat the expense of the other five. Or in that the internet, senior center takes on internet service and the town to thing upgrades our service to, um, three hundred and fifty. Um, up and down, which, which is a hundred and fifty dollars. Um, right now, we're paying. Sixty-nine dollars for that, so I talked, I have talked and Rebecca's talked to the senior center, they're willing to split that five thousand dollars. Um, so it would cost us twenty-five hundred dollars. But it also increased our monthly billing just a little bit as well. Um, I'm making, I'm making this recommendation to this, and the reason I am is, we are kinda taxing our current internet services at all. Because we have our, the security camera in here for the community center over here, and so we're kind of at our limit of what we can, um, download as it is. On that, questions, thoughts, council?
I think it's probably necessary, like you said, to. Keep everything up to date, it's, it's not gonna do us any good if you can't record stuff at the community center or see it here.
Uh, I agree.
Because someone's playing solitaire on their phone, and they're using up all the internet.
Right. Okay. Can I get a motion to do this, and so, I, what, what I am gonna ask them, there, so right now, um, this thirty-fifth, three hundred and fifty. Is a hundred and like eighty dollars, and so I'm gonna ask them if they would be willing to match here and the community center at the same hundred and fifty dollar mark. They may not, but they may, so we'll ask that, so, can I get a motion to approve, um, the installation of fiber optics? To town hall for twenty-five thousand dollars? Twenty-five hundred dollars, thank you.
I'll make that motion.
Any further discussion? All in favor? Opposed, motion carries. The online item here is credit cards, um, I've authorized Rebecca and Sally to start to look into. Getting town credit cards, just cuz right now we have debit cards, and technically, there's only two debit cards, and so. By technicality, Cliff takes the debit card when he goes out of town for trainings, even though his name's not on it, and so, by doing that, we'll have, get a few credit cards and. Make that a little bit cleaner, we'll probably even, possibly even consider getting rid of our, our debit card altogether. But we'll consider that through there, just because of that, so, just so you know that they're doing that. Um, the semi-quintcentennial application, so we wanna submit a second one, I brought this up to you last month. Um, maybe, I think I brought it up to you last month, um, we wanna apply for a second, second portion of the money underneath the town's nonprofit. Um, thing there, um, this one is going to be based, and we need your thoughts and ideas, this one's gonna be based more around just the fourth of July. What we're doing specifically on the fourth of July. Um, so some of the ideas that Rebecca and Sally and I and whoever else has come up with, and you helped me out here. Oh. There we go, so she wants to get some banners specifically for the town, we talked about maybe not necessarily getting. All twenty-one, but possibly getting handful, just because they're more specific to just that year. Um, we talked about getting some signs to put up along the canal, which we've already got one of them. We talked about doing, was it breakfast, or just the breakfast was part of it? So the, it's based, really, it's really based around our breakfast and our, on our, uh. Parade, um, we, Joe also wrote up about a flagpole. I made the recommendation that we need to just transport the one from the little pavilion to the big pavilion, cuz the little pavilion's sitting there doing nothing. Um, I, I brought up about getting T-shirts. Um, that we can give out to all the town residents and also to throw out through our parade. Um, we wanna get a couple of seventeen-seventy-six type American flags to display through there. Um, Rebecca really wants to do a themed seventeen-seventy-six themed per float or. Little kids walking down there to start our parade with the seventeen-seventy-six flag, but then still have our, our modern American flag through there. Um, the purpose of what I kinda like this is, I was thinking of with this twenty-five thousand that we're gonna go ask for is, what can we. Keep long-term in the town, that's what I'm kind of, what else can we use that, that's gonna revolve around this, but we can continue to use going forward? That was kind of some of my thoughts, I don't have ideas, that was just what I was hoping for, um, with everything that I just listed. We're probably at maybe seven thousand dollars, eight on the high end. So, we can ask for twenty-five. We wanna get this applied sooner than later, there's only technically been like ten awards so far, but talking to Kevin Voil, who's on that committee. They have just been inundated with applicants lately, so, like, there's a certain pool of money, and when it's gone, it's gone. And so, we would like to apply in the next month, basically, we have till the December to apply, but we'd really like to apply in really in the next handful of weeks. Um, for this, so, any other thoughts that you could think of on what we could do, we could get. We talked about benches. Any other thoughts that you could think of on what we could do, we could get, we talked about benches that have that seventeen-seventy-six to twenty-twenty-six. On that, you don't necessarily need benches in the town of Thane. Any thoughts there? Good call, thanks Cliff.
Could do another mural with seventeen-seventy-six.
Do the one with license plate, and have it see smoking, so it'd be city.
Yeah. The only thing that we, has, has to be done by July fourth, like, everything has to be done, complete, used by the July fourth of twenty-twenty-six. So, if you have any thoughts on that, please feel free to let us know. I have fully intent to, and I guess I'm asking your permission, same permission I asked six years ago. To go after the land and water conservation fund applicant for the sprinkler system, irrigation system for the other half of what we didn't do, which is the two ball fields and around the pavilion park area. Does council have any disagreement with me going after that grant? Thank you. Yay, the next one is the special purpose tax. We went after this, if you remember, and we lost handily.
Not in the camera area.
In the camera area. The question is, do we want to try to go and put something back on the ballot again? Cause if we do, this is the time we have to gear up with the other communities to get that rolling, because it needs to be in front of the county commissioners by late spring.
I think we'd have a better shot at it this, this time around with the reduction of property tax that everyone's seeing in their October statement from the county.
Yeah, the valid point, I didn't think about that, yeah.
I think, I'll be honest, the, everything I heard outside mumblings of it was, the hell, they need more of my tax money for. And I tend to agree with people on that, but now it might be a little lighter issue on the next ballot. That's my thought. Yeah, absolutely.
What'd we go for? Okay, I will reach out to the other mayors and the, and, and that, um, and see if there's, if there's interest in them going after that and working towards that again. Is there any questions for me? So going down through our WildStar two, WildStar one, and our Bank of Star Valley CDs, um, it shows your interest, it shows your balances. Do there, once again, I continue to make no recommendations of change there. Can I get a motion to issue checks of unknown amounts as identified in previous months' minutes to be ratified the next council meeting?
Motion.
Second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries, motion to pay bills?
Motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Thank you. Thanks Cliff. One question, Lenny, I'm asking, I put on Cliff's to-do list, like, if you know anybody, Lenny, who would re, could repair our, our chain link fences? I know that's a fight, because I don't know very many people that wanna repair chain link fences, but we could desperately have somebody go through all our chain link fences, straighten them up and through that there, so. Well, for sure, I wasn't thinking it would be till next summer, but I was just like, somebody there, so.
Get him down here to go over.
Yeah, I was just passing on to Lenny, cause he has a lot of connections there, so.
I kinda stay away from that when people ask me, because there's, there's just no one around that can, can do it.
I know.
You know what I mean, like? I had to defer to that, for sure.
Okay, anything else? If not, motion to adjourn.
Motion.
Second that.
All in favor?